Five o'clock. Hearing devices are up here at the front. You see Ms. Swanson, if you need one. To avoid meeting disruption, please place your cell phones in silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded when addressing council. Please sign in, state your name, and speak clearly into the microphone. Line item one, pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Hanlon to lead us in that. All right, thank you. Now we'll line item 1.2 roll call. Ward one, Councilman Hanlon is present. Ward two, Councilwoman Zoberzki is absent. Ward three, Councilman Lau is present. Ward four, Councilman Torres is present. And Ward five, Councilman Mendoza is he's absent as well. So we do have a quorum. We have three councilmen here. We'll move on to line item 1.3, public forum. This portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on this agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand featured in Zoom, star nine, if you're participating on phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. The mayor may, at his discretion, hold comment until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting will be provided to city council and added to the record, but will not be read during live meeting. Any public input received after 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting will be included in the record, but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input at this time?
Debbie Skinner for the record. I'd like to make a public statement regarding the notice received under NRS 241. I'm issuing this public statement in response to a notice that I recently received regarding NRS 241, which informed me that the mayor and the city council would be discussing matters concerning my character, alleged misconduct, competence, or health. First and foremost, I want to express how frustrating, exhausting, and disheartening this entire ordeal has been. It is incredibly difficult to comprehend how my integrity could be questioned after years of dedicated service to this community. I've been an active member in nearly every aspect of civic life, from serving from the school PTA board, coaching youth softball, soccer, to volunteering in programs that support children from ages four to 18. Currently, I am proudly, am serving my second term on the North Lion Fire Board and continue to manage Desert Rose RV Park, a business that has consistently given back to the community many times over. The fact that the mayor and council would publicly discredit my character and business without cause is not only deeply hurtful, but also beyond appropriate conduct for public officials. To help correct the narrative, I have submitted numerous third-party RV park reviews to the city clerk, all from guests who I do not know personally and have shared positive unbiased experiences with myself and Desert Rose RV Park. Given the seriousness of the actions taken against me, I am respectfully requesting a public and written apology from both the mayor and the council. This request is not made just on my behalf, but to ensure that my ability to continue serving and volunteering in this community is not unfairly hindered going forward. Finally, I would like to note that my attorney and I formally requested a full quorum of the council be present for the related proceedings. Unfortunately, that request was not honored. I appreciate your time and consideration in reading this statement, and I hope it serves as a reminder of the importance of fairness, respect, and due process, values that should be upheld by all who serve in the public office. Thank you, Debbie Skinner. And I have a copy for each of you.
Would you give mine to Aaron? Because I have, I have one right here, Debbie.
Tammy Dittman, Fernley Residence for the record. I just want to say I'm embarrassed as a city resident that eight, item eight, the closed personnel session, is even being brought forth and bringing the person's name on the report to be addressed without any notice or anything. It's just closed session, which usually does not state the employee's name or volunteer's name or anything else. So just putting on the record that it's an embarrassment as a city resident.
Do we have any other public input at this time? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. We will now move on to line item 1.4. Looking for an approval of the agenda, Councilman Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Hanlon, seconded by Councilman Lau. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
I have a quick question for Mr. Carson.
Yes, sir.
So on the 7.1, 7.2, and I'm asking this because we don't have all five of us here, does it have to be heard tonight?
Robert Carson, City Treasurer for the record. 7.2 does need to be heard tonight because it, our rules state that it has to be done before the end of the fiscal year or it reverts. We could potentially bring it back and try and undo it. I can work with our city attorney and figure out if that's possible, but I was trying to get it done before the end of the fiscal year per our rules.
What about 7.1?
7.1 is tied to 7.2 with some of the changes and some of the language in there, so I'll leave that one up to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We, we can always bring this presentation forward again when we have a full board if that works for you. Okay. Please vote. Motion carries three zero. Thank you. Consent agenda, looking for a motion for the consent agenda, Councilman Lau.
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hanlon. Please vote. Motion carries three zero. Wow, that thing is quick tonight. Ms. Swanson, would you please read the business licenses?
Yes, sir. Tonight we have Zeon Builders, Carpentry Contractor, The Complexion Studio Cosmetology, Key Motor LLC, Mobile Locksmith, Endeavor Wireless Construction, Telecom Contractor, Anam Care Counseling, Telehealth Counseling and Coaching, Rethin Havoc Hobby Crafter, Lopez Company Handyman, Northern Nevada Electric Electrical Contractor.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to line item three, which is reports by various entities. Do we have anybody from the Sheriff's Department here? Okay, seeing nobody from the Sheriff's Department. How about somebody from the Fire Department and the School Board? Okay. We will move on to staff reports. And sitting as the city manager, I just wanted to let council know that I've been contacted by one agency for CPS HR Consulting, looking for the city manager. I was waiting for one other one that hasn't got back ahold of me, so I'm gonna give them to the rest of the week. And then if I hear from them, then I will, I will make sure to get council both of these firms so they can look them up and get a recommendation on what council would like to see me go from there. So let's go ahead and move on. Do we have any, any other? Oh, one other thing that I wanted to talk about too is that I was been in contact with NDOT on the roundabout, and I guess I can talk about that because we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a presentation on that, so I'll talk about that at that time. So anyways, do we have any staff reports? Anybody else have staff report? Okay, seeing none, let's move on with council, Councilman Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything at this time. However, I was curious if Mr. Williams had a report on the traffic light that was out. There were some things going on downtown on Fremont Street. Do we have an update on that?
I heard about it. Mr. Williams?
Barry Williams, Public Works Director for the record. The traffic signal did experience malfunction late last night or early evening that last night around seven o'clock. Our crews needed to order parts, and they were able to get that traffic signal back online about 5:30 this morning.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Lau?
I have nothing.
Councilman Torres?
I have nothing.
Okay, I have nothing as well. So we will move on to legislative report. And I believe we have some, oh, there you are.
Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Council members, Daniel Judasey with Lynn Judasey Government Affairs. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm gonna provide a brief kind of session overview, and then in the next council meeting, we'll kind of get more in depth on the legislation that's going to specifically affect Fernley. We've gotten the bills as enrolled to the governor. The governor's gotten through his veto, so now we can get in and see kind of what was added there last minute on some of these things. So three key points from the legislature this year. There were 1,210 bills that were introduced. The governor issued 87 vetoes, and there were 556 bills that were signed into law. The governor passed his record of last session of 75 vetoes, issuing 87 this year, so quite a substantial increase. I think part of that is partly due to the volume of legislation that was introduced this session. That volume of legislation caused all kinds of problems and slowing the legislature down from the beginning, and then caused a number of quick hearings near the end where things were brought up late at night, you know, to kind of stop public input. There are quite a few issues with, public watchdogs had had some, some issues with the, with the way things went. However, that despite the active committee hearings, you know, there were nearly 300 bills that failed in mid-April and many others missed deadlines. In May, the State's Economic Forum came through and produce or had a deficit of $173 million in shortfall in tax revenue. And then we also had about $150 million in budget surpluses for state agencies, or excuse me, not surpluses, of state agencies that came in in a deficit. So in response, legislatures, they did avoid reductions by using federal relief funds, scaling back some spending, and engaging in negotiations. Ultimately, the legislature did pass all five budget bills, so that quashed any need for a special session. Some of the key policy points throughout the session, being the governor's agenda, was charter school pay. That passed and gave a long-awaited salary increase to start charter school educators. State workers' pay, AB 492, also passed with bipartisan support. That was aimed to recruit and retain our staff. Housing, the governor's housing bill did pass. That was one of the five, his five key bills that that did go through. He got about one and a half bills through, the second being, I'll speak on that, SB 460 in a second. Healthcare overhaul, that failed. This was one of the governor's main proposals that was trying to restructure Medicare delivery. Some of the Democratic priorities include housing, education equity, and labor and healthcare. Housing included both tenant protections. Some of those stalled, some of those got through, some of those were vetoed. But incentives for planning coordination, those kinds of measures passed, some housing assistance to keep people in housing and to build new housing also passed. One of the pieces of bipartisan breakthrough was Senate Bill 460. While initially that was the Democrats' education bill, there are a number of pieces from the governor's education bill that were added into there. That was one of the, the things that we did come to compromise on throughout the session. It expanded, expanded state-funded pre-K, increased per pupil funding, streamlined teacher licensures, and included legal professions for school staffs involved in any applications. Some of the session ends, the final days were quite dramatic. There were committee hearings all the way until 10, 11 o'clock at night. The last couple of days of the legislature, we went all the way to midnight. Democrats did try and bring some changes to the legislative commissions at the final moments. Senator Ira Hansen did get in there and ended up killing that bill through a kind of a procedural process. Some of the high-level proposals that didn't make it through included the film tax credit expansion. That failed because a number of amendments were tried to push at the last minute. There are also a number of bills just due to the end of getting too close to the time clock that didn't pass and actually passed both houses, but didn't make it over to enrollment, so they didn't make it to the governor's desks. Some main takeaways for local governments, budget stability, despite early missteps in revenue, reduced revenues, a state maintained balanced budget and protected key services. Housing and planning, expanded state-level interests and incentivities in local housing development, coordination, and regulatory reform. Education and workforce, local districts and charter schools will benefit from increased funding and streamlined hiring rules. And healthcare infrastructure, rule and regional partnerships will be vital as the state continues to pursue reforms and expansion in healthcare delivery. So in closing, the legislative session was kind of a case study in divided government. It was messy, but you know, when they did come to compromise, things got done. For the, for the city of Fernley, the outcomes result present both some opportunities and some new responsibilities, especially around housing and education. But I also want to send out a thank you to the mayor, council, and staff. You all have been great throughout the legislative session and reviewing, responding, and getting back to us, helping us do our jobs better and representing the interests of Fernley. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Does council have any questions at this time? None, no questions. Thank you very much for the update and report. We appreciate you.
Makes it easy, and I'll see you guys in a few weeks.
Okay.
All right. Bye.
Okay, we will now move on to line item four, 4.1, for possible action, presentation and discussion regarding a survey results received from a proposed landscape restoration project within the Fernley Roundabout. And we have Ms. John presenting.
Can you hear me? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Libby John, City of Fernley, Deputy Public Works Director for the record. I'm just doing a quick presentation on the, to outline the results that we received for the landscape survey that I presented on a couple of months ago. The landscape survey was posted to the city's website, social media platforms, and the reader board. In addition, a link to the survey was sent out to the public with utility bills. An open discussion will follow this presentation. Again, there's no motion required on this item, and merely city staff is requesting further direction from city council. Can you change it, Ms. Swanson, please?
Is it on? It's on this side.
Okay, it's on now. I think it'll do it. Okay. On this slide, it just goes, it details what the, the sections of the survey outlined. There were four main options that the public could choose from. And the four main ones was hardscape, softscape, artificial, and zeroscape. Again, these were ones that I had detailed in my first presentation. We also gave them the option to pick two main options from the main options, and then they can describe what they were thinking they could do with those two main options that they were picking. And alternatively, they could also select another option where they could provide a description and upload an image of their vision of what they think could be placed in the center of the roundabout. As you can see, softscape received the most, the highest percentage, and we received about 700 votes total. In this slide, the votes, this, these ones are for just the mix of two main options. The data was really messy, so it was a little difficult to, to figure out a way to present it, so I hope this makes sense. We received 29% of the votes for artificial and softscape. Again, this is a mix of the four main ones that we offered primarily at the first presentation. So for the artificial and softscape, that represents maybe a mix of high desert vegetation, monument signs or sculptures is what that could be. This is the final results. This is just a mix of all of the, the compilation of all the votes that we received, including the four main ones, and then a mix of, of two of the four main ones. It, it also, it outlines there on the very bottom, the other, we received just 62 votes for other with a description for that. As you can see, we received 350 votes for softscape, and that's what appealed most to the voters. The data came off of the city's website as a spreadsheet, so the descriptions had to be sorted according to keywords. There were about 285 votes that were, where there was a description, there was a wide range of things. So basically, what I ended up having to do is I had to pick keywords and then sort them by the keyword, and then I, I just color-coded it, and then I determined what the percentage was of each keyword from the total votes that we received for the other. Several votes were, we received were about the school mascot, only the high school mascot, though, not the elementary school mascots, so I think that that needs to be noted. There were several requests for sculptures or statues. Again, we have to be mindful of the fact that nothing can be tall enough where if it gets knocked over or hit, that it can't fall into traffic. There were a lot of comments asking for the roundabout to be removed and replaced with a light, which was expected. Here are some of the examples. One was to represent the, the veteran cemetery, where we have several flagpoles with flags for each military branch and the American flag in the center. Several for a local artist doing some outdoor art similar to what we already have here. Statues or sculptures of wild horses, train cars or wildlife. There were a couple for having Burning Man design it. Water fountains, a lot mineral, they were asking for minimal landscaping, so there's no distractions or inhibited views. And somebody did mention that they wanted a Donner Party wagon. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have. Appreciate further direction and discussion on this.
I just want to make comment that today I just spoke with NDOT about the roundabout and what we were presenting, and they were really excited to hear what we have and are really excited to work with us on putting something in the roundabout. Once I told her that I would send her the information from the survey that we had along with the pictures, because the pictures, I do believe that, that people were voting on, were from roundabouts in the state of Nevada, right? So, and, and I told her that too. And she goes, once you get me all that information, I'll get it started and let you know what you have to do. So NDOT is on board with it, and, and they're excited to do something with the roundabout.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and everybody that, that wanted to upload an image, it was uploaded. I just need to work with Casey on removing that from the website. I'm not, I'm not sure how to do that, and he's not sure yet, but we can work on that if you want those as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to get this presentation along with pictures of the softscape and the hardscape, so that NDOT has kind of a, a visual on, on what we're talking about.
Okay, understood.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Torres?
Thanks for the presentation, especially going through all of the data. So as I mentioned before with Mr. Williams, and I think I've mentioned it a couple of times with you, talking to W N D D, they're gonna try to help us find funding for this. So let's keep that in mind as well, because the least amount that we have to pay out of pocket, they may be able to get funded would be great and not take any money out, take as little as possible out of our current working budget. So thanks a lot.
Councilman Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to thank all the citizens who contributed their input to this. I think it's very important that we have public participation, and the last few times that we've asked for, we've gotten it, and so I want to thank them for that. Did NDOT, are they interested in contributing anything towards this or just to help us through the process?
Well, through the Nevada One Plan, they don't have anything budgeted for that roundabout, so I would, at this point, say probably not.
Okay, thank you. So I look forward to some renderings that we can sort of get a better idea. I think softscape's kind of a broad, but I think most people like sort of a sculpture thing and sort of the zero impact to the area, so that it's, I wish we could put a flag, everyone wants a flag, I know that. So what are we, whatever we can do, I look forward to saying it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Councilman Torres?
Well, Libby, if you could just kind of keep me in the loop with that. So on Monday, and I'm just throwing this out because this has to do with it, on Monday I was named to the executive board for Western Nevada Development District, so we, we have it in, and I, I'll work with the executive director and the president on getting this done.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this is just a presentation, so at this time, we don't need to, to vote on that. We'll move on to line item five, staff reports, 5.1. For possible action, TSM 200004, tentative subdivision map amendment to conditions of approval, consideration of, and possible action on the amendment to the condition of approval for the Fernwood Village tentative subdivision map, TSM 20004. A 54 lot subdivision comprising 7.08 acres, plus or minus, generally located between Anglewood Drive to the north, Granada Street to the east, Tanglewood South Drive to the south, and Vine to the west, and it's 8pm, 202-516-06.
Thank you, Mayor McIntyre. City Council, Elisa Johansson, Senior Planner for the record. I'm here tonight to discuss a relatively simple action, an amendment to the conditions of approval for TSM 20004. The approximately 7.08 acre project is located, as the mayor mentioned, between Eaglewood Drive to the north, Granada Street to the east, Tanglewood Drive to the south, and Vine Street to the west. The site zone and land use are medium-density residential, MDR 14. The surrounding zoning pattern is also residential, single-family residential to the north, medium-density residential to the south, multiple-family residential to the east, and medium-density residential to the west. Here is a vicinity map, so you can visually orient yourselves. And here is the preliminary site plan that we approved under the tentative subdivision map process. Here is the condition in question. This is the condition that we propose to modify. I want to draw your attention to the last sentence, which states that no extensions may be granted. Why is that problematic? Nevada revised statutes, Chapter 278, Section 360, Paragraph 1C, allows extensions of time of up to two years by planning commission action. Our city condition erroneously states that no extensions will be granted. We are in conflict with the provisions of state statutes. We need to amend this condition to bring it into conformance. Amendments to conditions of approval must be processed in the same manner as the application for division of land. That means we took this to planning commission last week. If approved, this amendment would allow the developer's extension of time request to be acted upon. And as I mentioned, we took this to planning commission last week, and they did recommend approval of this action. Here is the recommended motion language. At this time, we do not recommend any alternatives, again, because...
At this time, we do not recommend any alternatives, again, because state law does supersede and inform our local regulations. We need to be in conformance with those statutes. Considering the information provided by city staff, I move to approve the amendment of the conditions of approval for T S M 20004, known as Fernwood Village. And that brings me to the end of my very short presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Hannan?
I don't have any questions. I'll let Councilman Torres go. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Councilman Torres?
I don't have a question.
Councilman Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the amendment to the conditions of approval, T S M 20004. Removing the restriction on extensions as presented by staff.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Hannan, second by Councilman Torres, please vote. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to line item six, public hearing, discussion, possible action to adopt Bill 360 as an ordinance adopting the 2024 International Code Council I C C series. The 2023 National Electrical Code and the 2024 Northern Nevada Chapter of International Code Council amendments as attached, which will amend the City of Fernley's municipal code, Title 8, Chapter 2, Buildings and Building Regulations and Building and Construction. So this is for discussion for council? And staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members, Charity Burkle, building official for the City of Fernley, for the record. I am here tonight to do a standard code adoption of the next cycle of international codes. On this, I, I do have a short presentation tonight, and then we can go through questions if you have questions. Pretty standard procedure, all of Northern Nevada adopts new code books. They're published every three years, but all of the Northern Nevada jurisdictions adopt every six years just to avoid additional costs and, and things like that. So it's pretty standard, pretty straightforward. But we'll just go through a quick presentation. So just a picture of some of the new books for 2024. The codes published by the International Code Council and codes published by the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials are the predominant building codes used throughout the United States. These codes are updated on a three-year cycle. We have historically adopted codes every six years. Here is a list of the codes that are being adopted, and these were also included in the staff report. Building codes establish minimum standards to safeguard life and public welfare by regulating and controlling the design, construction and installation of new buildings and alterations to existing buildings. Adopting updated building safety codes enables the City of Fernley to address all aspects of safe and sound construction such as structural integrity, plumbing, electrical, mechanical systems, energy efficiency and sustainability. We are currently using the 2018 codes and amendments published by the Northern Nevada Chapter of the I C C. Since 2006, building officials in Northern Nevada have worked together for consistency in the way building codes are adopted and interpreted. The Northern Nevada International Code Council, N N I C C, recently completed the adoption process to develop the 2024 Northern Nevada amendments to the international and uniform codes. Over 80 people participated from the building industry and nine jurisdictions in the amendment process. An oversight steering committee and eight technical committees developed the amendments. I participated as the building official at the steering committee level. This is just the front of the amendment package. It just tells you that all of the jurisdictions up above are the jurisdictions that adopt these codes. And there is a link there for transparency to the N N I C C website. There's a downloadable PDF of the N N I C C amendment package. The calendars are there, they include the dates, agendas and minutes for all the committee meetings. Northern Nevada jurisdictions may adopt, adapt the amendment package as they see fit. Some of the code highlight changes, the seismic, which relates to earthquakes, frost protection and snow load requirements based on conditions in Northern Nevada. Fire sprinklers are still not going to be required in townhomes and one and two family dwellings of less than 5,000 square feet of living space. That has not changed. New design criteria for rockery walls. Increasing the number of children allowed in Group E daycare and dwellings to mirror state requirements. Removal of requirements for mandated power generation on rooftops of commercial buildings. That was a big one, that is something that the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code requires that all commercial structures are retrofit with the ability to add solar to them, which is, was a huge cost factor. And the Northern Nevada chapter did amend that out of the code as a requirement. Reducing energy system monitoring requirements from continuous to desegregated end-use totals. And the Governor's Office of Energy was very much involved in the adoption process also. Any amendments to the code that will not material materially lessen the effective energy savings requirements of the code and are deemed necessary to support effective compliance and enforcement of the code and must establish the minimum standards. And that comes from N R S 701.220. Here is the letter of approval from the Governor's Board of Energy. After much thought and consideration, they did finally sign off on all the amendments that were put forth before them. The implementation timeline, so if the Fernley City Council approves the ordinance to adopt the 2024 building codes with the Northern Nevada amendments, an approximate six-month grace period will begin July 14th, 2025. During that grace period, applications will be accepted using either the 2018 or the 2024 codes. Beginning January 14th of 2026, only applications using the 2024 codes will be accepted. And with that, I am here if you have any questions or any discussion.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we have public input, and then we'll have additional comments from council, discussion from council. So is there any public input on this? I'm seeing not anybody on Zoom. Okay, Councilman Lau?
I'm ready to make a motion.
We have a question here, Councilman Torres?
Thank you for the presentation. The only question I had was if the city decided to write our own code for residential sprinkler systems, we would still be allowed to do that, right?
I would have to do some research, and I believe we could, well, they're required by code. The only reason that they are not required is because the Northern Nevada chapter amended them out. The fire department actually amends that out. But we don't adopt the amendments to the fire code through North Lion, so I'm almost positive that yes, if we wanted to go down that road, it could certainly be done.
And, and I'm, I'm only looking at it from, one, a safety issue. And two, I understand that the, the cost of, of building a home with those in it would be a little bit more. But in the long run, the, the lower insurance premium is going to pay for it. So, I mean, it might be a, a good idea as we continue to grow. And it'll also, you know, suppress a, a fire in a residential, as, you know, our fire department is low on staff. I mean, we're never going to keep up, keep up with staff, right?
Exactly.
It's going to be behind the eight ball, but that may be something to think about in the future, so thank you.
Yeah, I would have to do some research, but Mr. Torres, I'm almost certain that we could just write an amendment to the amendment package that we adopt.
I, I think if I read that, it said that for single story and two-story, under 5,000 square feet, they're not required, but over 5,000, they are required.
Correct, and that's of living space. That does not include any shop or garage square footage. So the home has to be 5,000 square foot of living space in order for fire sprinklers to be required as it's written and as you will vote on tonight.
Okay, if there is no other discussion, go ahead, Councilman Lau?
I move to adopt Bill 360 as an ordinance adopting the 2024 International Code Council series, the 2023 National Electric Code and the Northern Nevada Chapter of the International Code Council amendments as attached.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau and seconded by Councilman Hannan, please vote. Motion carries three zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Now move on to line item 6.2 for possible action, discussion, possible action regarding Resolution Number 25-004 associated with Master Plan Amendment Application, M P A 25002 submitted by the City of Fernley to adopt the Southwest Area Plan document and approximately 11,800 acres generally located south of the Truckee Canal and west of Highway 1595 alternate. Ms. Rambo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Michelle Rambo, Planning Director for the record. I'm, I'm very happy to be here tonight after a year and a half of public meetings and workshops and stakeholder meetings and procedural things and redoing at the last minute. We're finally done, and I think we're ready to get this thing going. Blake Young from Kimley Horn is on Zoom, and he is going to give a very short presentation just to remind us all of what, how we got to this point. And then we can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Blake, you're?
Awesome, thank you.
Not yet, I'll let you know.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. For the record, my name is Blake Young with Kimley Horn, and I am the project manager for the Southwest Area Plan. And we're going to go through just high level, the, the Southwest Area Plan process from start to finish. Starting with the existing conditions analysis. We, we conducted a, an analysis, a site constraints and opportunities analysis to understand the Southwest Area Plan's topography, developable versus undevelopable areas and adjacent land uses and community facilities.
Hey Blake, I'm going to interrupt you for a second, we can't see your screen. Do we need to just pull it up here and click it? Okay, guess we're going to do this the old fashioned way, give us a second to pull it up.
All right, there we go. So this analysis included, like I was saying, a site constraints and opportunities analysis, a transportation analysis which dove into the existing access points and functional classifications of adjacent roadways. A water capacity analysis to understand the current water supply, demand and facilities. And then also a market analysis which dove into the demographics and community profile, growth trends and occupational trends. And then this led into the first community engagement effort or phase. First, we started with the online survey. This was posted between December 2023 and April of 2024. We had a total of 136 respondents to that survey. And then we also hosted an open house on January 16th of 2024 in which we had a total of 73 attendees. And then the day after the first open house, we hosted a stakeholder workshop. This was essentially a listening session to understand the current and future development plans and site constraints from, from developers and stakeholders. And we had, we had this workshop, like I said, on January 17th. And then that helped us essentially create the foundation of this area plan, which is community engagement and leading into the the creation of the vision and goals for this area plan. So we used the feedback from, from all of these different avenues and working really closely with planning staff to refine these vision and goals to ensure that they're not only compatible with the comprehensive plan but other existing planning initiatives. And the, the six vision elements was employment opportunities, a diversity of housing types, neighborhood serving commercial, a town center and community amenities, innovative uses in recreation and open space preservation. We then continued the engagement with the second open house hosted on September 12th of 2024. We had a total of 50 attendees. And what we heard from, from most of the, the attendees was to retain the open space and recreational areas in the undevelopable areas. Locate industrial areas within the southern portions of the Southwest Area Plan. Preserve the view shed of mountains. And there was a lot of concern with the traffic safety along U S 95 near the high school and future residential areas. We also hosted stakeholder sessions, individual planning commission and city council sessions. And then finally, some additional stakeholder workshops hosted on May 9th. And this was a working session with, with Norman Properties to revise the southwest portion of the land use plan. And that leads us to the future land use plan. As you can see, there is a vast diverse mix of, of land uses from single family or low density residential to mixed use, to commercial areas and open space preservation and also recreational areas. And then also focusing the majority of the light industrial uses to the south of the area plan. And then this also provides a bypass that bifurcates the site from east to west and connects to U S 95 and I 80. And then we also hosted a fiscal impact analysis to analyze the future property tax revenue. So the total annual revenue at full buildout is $122 million in property tax revenue in total. Of that 122 million, 22.8 million in property tax revenue for the City of Fernley. And then we also conducted a water capacity analysis that analyzed the current water demand, usage, storage and supply. This water capacity analysis identified which portions of the water system will need upgrades to support the Southwest Area Plan. This included supply wells, pumping, transmission lines, raw and treated water storage and the distribution systems. And then finally, we get to the implementation plan. A few key areas of focus on this implementation plan plan is the infrastructure and utilities, water and transportation. We also included potential funding mechanisms, including metro districts, tax increment financing, impact fees, general fund, et cetera, and then also provided a priority list or categorized these items by high to moderate to low priority to give not only City Council and Mayor, but planning staff a clear path forward to implement this plan. And I will pass it over to Michelle if you would like to add anything.
Council have any questions? Saying none, I will now open it up for public input. Do you have the mic on, sir?
Oh, I have to press it. All right. My name is Mark Tilford. I live in the Sage Valley Estates area. Regards to this Southwest Master Plan. Dear Honorable City Council Members, I relocated to here from SoCal seven years ago after leaving the concrete asphalt jungle for open territory. I told I sold my sailboat, resigned from my Marina Del Rey based yacht club, and moved to Northern Nevada. I had a choice of areas to live in, including Reno, Sparks, Spanish Springs, Carson City, Dayton, Fallon, but I chose Fernley to be an acceptable small municipal area with the benefit of having a great climate. Now I'm witnessing the mass industrialization of this small town with some planning commission and city council members that can't say the word no to our city's never-ending construction development progress. This leads us up to this master plan amendment application proposal requesting for 12,000 acres of open range land minus a small airplane landing strip, a couple of small businesses, a small individual family home subdivisions, and a motocross racetrack. This 12K area is also currently home to dove hunting, camping, hiking, four-wheeling, and off-road bicycling. These recreational endeavors will be curtailed or severely limited if this Southwest Master Plan project is allowed to proceed. Who would be the winners? Big business such as developers, construction contractors, real estate agents at all. Also, the city would also need to hire more employees for the Public Works Department as well as other areas in the public sector. These are things that will lead our small town closer to a concrete asphalt jungle, which is so very sad. Who would be the losers? The City of Fernley resident citizen taxpayers. Even though the value of our homes and small businesses might increase, the new traffic congestion on our roadways, many of which are under disrepair and require immediate maintenance, will not be a benefit to our city's residents. No, I don't want to see my beautiful naked southwest area mountains and hills to be destroyed by another unsightly metropolitan suburban construction project. Fernley is a farm district and shall remain a farm district if we will this so. The tax-paying residents of Fernley do not owe anyone affordable housing, unaffordable housing, construction jobs, or increased utility bills or tax liability. Since this proposal potentially affects 100% of our City of Fernley residents, my offer is that the City Council table tonight's vote and place this issue on the next municipal election, either yes or no.
Sir, your time is up.
This coming June. Thank you for listening. Have a good day.
Thank you. Any other public input at this time? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Tom Shannon. I am a member of the Southwest Meadows Development Area. I have an extensive background of over 40 years in water with the California Water Department of Water Resources, ending my career in 2016 as a superintendent of Maintenance at Oroville Dam. End of work in every power plant from Redding down to Castaic. I have a concern only with infrastructure. I have seen nothing that indicates that we have a hydrologist involved. I have been to the meetings as addressed by Mr. Young and questioned, and I have seen hydrology reports from California, Nevada, et cetera, and I'm concerned very much about the water issue. We have a newlands project that supplies some water. We have groundwater that can supply some water, and we have some storage. And it has met the needs of the Fernley area for as long as Fernley has been here. However, we have not experienced a 25% increase in a subdivision, and that is a generous residential number that I can throw out there as far as what we're proposing here would be 25% increase in water, just residential. That has nothing to do with our commercial. And like I say, that's conservative. Where does that come from if we have a problem with our Newlands project, which can be anything from my business to lifting of a canal, lifting of a canal as they continue to go ahead and they line this canal, and it lifts. They shut down that canal, and you have an extended period of time without water. This has happened to the California Water Project, and it could happen here. So now you have no Newlands project, or they decide to lift it. They are the government. So they do decide that they are going to send that water to Save Pyramid at some point, and our community loses water. Now we're in groundwater. What if we have a drought, an extensive drought? We've had them before. We'll have them again. What if we have storage issues? We don't store water well here. I have been involved in the nation's largest some of the nation's largest projects. I've had people worldwide come to our plant and inspect it, and at one time, we were the third largest dam in the world. I just asked.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public input at this time? Saying none, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Clayton Trapp. For the record, I represent the client who is an owner of parcel 02027201, and I gave the same speech a couple of weeks ago, but I have something to add to it. I would like to express concerns, and my client would like to express concerns regarding the proposed Southwest Area Plan and its potential impact on my client's property. The property has been owned by my client since 2007. They've paid taxes. In 2008, they invested in a zone map amendment process, successfully achieving the commercial zoning designation consistent with the city's prior planning vision. Since then, the property has been held with the intent to market and/or develop for commercial uses. The property, or excuse me, the proposed SWA shifts the land use designation for this parcel to residential. Such a change would directly undermine the property's current commercial zoning and marketability. Prospective buyers and developers will be discouraged by this inconsistency and devalue the parcel. Moreover, my client would face the undue burden of repeating the zone map amendment process to restore commercial alignment despite the valid 2008 approval. Under Nevada Revised Statute, Chapter 278, specifically 278.3.9, 349, excuse me, and related provisions, the city is obligated to consider existing zoning entitlements, property owner reliance on prior approvals, economic impacts, and potential undue hardship. My client has relied in good faith on the commercial zoning for 17 years, and a land use change at this stage would create substantial unnecessary hardship, diminishing both property value and the ability to sell or develop the site. Conclusion being, we respectfully request the city maintain a land use designation in the SWA that is consistent with the property's existing commercial zoning. On the website and even in Mr. Blake Young's presentation this evening, I apologize. I'm high in the Rocky Mountains currently, and there's a lot of stuff going on here, so I apologize. It still shows the new proposed PA 12, I believe, and so what we'd like to propose, Mr. Mayor and City Council, is if we could have some assurances, we have had some assurances from the city and from the Planning Director, Ms. Rambo, and we're very appreciative of that, but we're still inconsistent, and it's being showed on the website. And again, as Mr. Blake just described, this is shown as PA 12. Would the City Council and the mayor consider, as well as the Planning Director, if it's consistent that this particular parcel
Sir, your time is up.
Be afforded the opportunity to keep their designation.
Mr. Trapp? Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Okay, we have one more on Zoom. Go ahead.
And Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, if we could hold that one real quick. I know that as the Plan Director wants to make a response to that last comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said two weeks ago, that this does not change the underlying zoning, so they are still zoned commercial. If they come forward with a commercial project, they are still able to go forward with it. We have talked in the last couple of weeks about potentially going back and doing a city-initiated master plan amendment if we need to, clean it up, but we will do that on our end, so they don't have to pay for it, if that's the way they want to go. But in terms of the zoning, they have commercial, they can build commercial. It's not going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Next person on Zoom? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Derek Kirkland, representing the Norman Properties. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I just wanted to express our gratitude to the city for working with us. I know we came in at the last minute. I think we've worked pretty hard with city staff and members of the council to come up with a fair resolution, and I just wanted to express our support for the Southwest Area Master Plan as it exists today. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? No? All right, we will go back now to any additional discussion with city councilor staff. Okay, saying none. Looking for a motion. Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to certify Resolution 25004 associated with MPA 25002 and adopt the Southwest Fernley Area Plan document as presented by staff and approved by the Planning Commission.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Hannon, seconded by Councilman Mylon. Please vote. And motion carries three zero. Thank you. We will now move on to line item seven, Resolution 7.1 for possible action. Discussion possible action to approve Resolution 25-008, amending the City of Fernley's fund balance policy. And Mr. Mortensen, can we combine 7.1 and 7.2 because they tie in directly?
Aaron Mortensen, City Attorney, if Mr. Carson wants to do that, absolutely.
Okay, then we'll also offer possible action. Discussion possible action to approve Resolution 25-009 to commit 3,126,000 of the City of Fernley's fiscal where am I? Fiscal year 2025 general fund ending balance for the design and construction of capital projects and purchase of capital equipment approved in the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan that was presented as part of the final budget. Mr. Carson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Members of Council. Robert Carson, City Treasurer for the record. So just a real brief presentation to describe the changes, and then also the proposed resolution in 25-009. So here's a brief history on the fund balance policy. The policy was created with Resolution 13-012, which passed in August of 2013, I believe. It was created to comply with GASB statement number 54, which requires local and state governments to have a fund balance policy to mitigate against any unforeseen emergencies or loss of funding. And this fund balance policy has not been updated since it was passed. The contents of the policy, there's different sections. So the purpose and the stated purpose is to ensure economic and financial stability to the city. The different categories are described and defined in the policy. So you have non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And then the authority, who has the authority to grant different amounts to these different categories? The classification, and that's the order in which the fund balance is used. And then we have a maintenance section, which outlines our minimum required unassigned fund balance, and then our requirements annually to review those balances. So the updates that were made, like I said, they were minor changes in the category. We just kind of updated the description in assigned fund balance and took out some of the unnecessary language in there. And then in the maintenance section, what we are proposing to do is increase the minimum unassigned fund balance to maintain from 8.3% to 15%. So the GFOA recommends two months of expenditures to be held in unassigned fund balance, which would be 16.67%. So if we increase our minimum unassigned balance to maintain at 15%, we'll be right at that two months, which is what best practices suggest. So this would allow for more coverage to mitigate revenue shortfalls, unanticipated expenditures, emergencies, et cetera, and it will not be used for ongoing or operating expenditures except in extraordinary circumstances, which you guys will approve during the budget process. So those are the changes to the fund balance policy, which would be Resolution 25-008. And if there's any questions on those, I can answer those. We can just move on to the next one real quick.
Council have any questions at this time? So, or go ahead.
So one more quick slide. So Resolution 25-009 is proposing to commit 3.126 million of the current year's ending fund balance in the general fund, which will cover the proposed capital expenditures that were approved in the FY '26 budget. The FY '26 budget that was approved has 4.11 million of the general fund's fund balance being utilized to cover proposed expenditures. So the remaining 984,000 after the committed fund balance would be assigned at the end of the year to cover the one-time expenditures approved by council. And with that, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Councilman Torres?
I don't have a question. I was going to make a motion if there's no questions.
Oh, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead. Councilman Torres?
I motion to pass Resolution 25-008 and Resolution 25-009 as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Hannon. Please vote. And motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a five, 10-minute break. Okay, so we're back in open session. And so this is Mr. Mortensen, our city attorney, has a few words here.
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, before we get into this topic, I note there were some questions that were brought up during public comment that I did want the opportunity to address. In regards to the decision that council is making today, the senior citizen's advisory council, under its bylaws, has a section that allows council to remove an individual for reason or without reason. In this case, the mayor is asking for Ms. Skinner to be removed from the senior citizens advisory council or committee without reason. We did agendize this item. It has been discussed in terms of a closed session, discussed character incompetence. The city, and I want to make that very clear, the city and council does not intend to present evidence or documentation attacking Ms. Skinner's character, her job performance, or anything like that. This is a vote on a no reason removal. The purpose of the closed session is to give Ms. Skinner an opportunity to present to council in a closed session any evidence or documentation or witnesses that she wishes to provide to council prior to council making that deliberation and decision in open meeting. So the purpose of that closed session is not to attack Ms. Skinner, but instead to allow Ms. Skinner the opportunity to present any information that she feels like council should be aware of before making a decision. Are there any questions?
Okay, so at this time, 8.1, possible action to enter into a closed personal session to remove Debbie Skinner from her position on the Fernley Senior Citizen Advisory Board. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. Looking for a motion to go into closed session, and need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to move this to closed session.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Mall, seconded by Councilman Hannon, please vote. Motion carries three zero. So if we could ask everybody to wait out in the foyer would be great, thank you.
And Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, anybody who either the mayor or Ms. Skinner wishes to remain
Okay, so we're back in open session. We're at 8.3, discussion possible action on the closed personal session to remove Debbie Skinner from her position on the City of Fernley Senior Advisory Committee pursuant NRS 241-0301 public hearing. So this is discussion with council and staff at this point. Now, Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, NRS 281A-420 requires me to disclose a potential conflict of interest this matter before the body is related to my private capacity and city capacity. I have personal business and board member relations with Ms. Skinner. I do not believe that these would affect the independence or judgment of a reasonable person in my situation. However, in order to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, I am abstaining from the vote in this matter.
So that being said, we now do not have a quorum, we only have two. So at this point, we will
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, continue it to the next agenda.
Continue this until the next board meeting, when we do have more council people up here on the dais.
And Mr. Mayor, that would be July 2nd, is that correct?
Yeah, July 2nd would be the meeting. Is that good? Okay, so we just go on to line nine, right?
Aaron Mortson, City Attorney, continue on to Agenda Item 9.
Okay, so we'll move on to line item nine, the portion of the meeting devoted to public. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand, feature Zoom, star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Is there any public input at this time?
Debbie Skinner, for the record, and I just want to tell how extremely disappointed I am to the mayor and the council. Mr. Hannon, if you knew that you were going to abstain for personal conflict, and you guys continue to ignore the request for us to have a full quorum, and I have to go through this a second time again in two weeks, shame on you.
I would like clarification on something. So I guess I missed a meeting, and I'm pretty sure I've gone to every meeting. But I didn't realize we had hired a city manager. Mr. Mayor, you keep saying you're the city manager. You are not a city manager. You may be working in the capacity, but you are the mayor of city.
Hi, my name is Patty Palmer, and for the record, I'm a resident of Fernley. And in a time when bullying is highly discouraged, I think that the actions of the council singling out a respected member of this community and putting them on blast, questioning their character is an extreme form of bullying and is uncalled for and unacceptable.
Is there any other public input at this time? Is there anybody on Zoom, Ms. Swanson? No? Okay. So City Hall will be closed tomorrow for Juneteenth, and our next meeting is July 2nd at 5:00 o'clock. This meeting is adjourned.